Everybody ready?
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the April 22nd, 2024 City of Tuolton Work Session. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the Parks Replacement Fund Discussion. Welcome, gentlemen. We have Don and Ross. You don't see these two together often. And all this gentleman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilor. So Parks Replacement Fund Discussion is the topic for this evening, first topic. And so Don and I are here tonight to talk about that, give you some background, and talk about some proposed ideas for how this could work. So a little background first. Don created this slide deck and it's fitting. It's a fun slide deck with a fun background. I think you did a great job. A little background on what we're talking about tonight and why. First, the parks condition assessment, you'll recall that we completed during COVID. That parks condition assessment gave us the data to tell a very specific story about the state of our park system. That launched into the parks utility fee that provided a fund to replace that aging infrastructure in our parks. Much of it is 30 years old or so. And then in 2022, November of '22, the voters approved the Parks Bond that is now actively investing in infrastructure throughout our park system. And so through all these different actions, those three actions, at a budget meeting, I believe it was last year, the item was brought up about how are we maintaining? We have the parks utility fee to replace the aged infrastructure, the things that need replacement now, and there's a pretty long list there, and we'll continue to chip away at that list. But what about the investments we're making right now with the Parks Bond dollars? And how will we replace those assets and that infrastructure in 30 years? And so this is really a concept of what we're calling a replacement fund. And the idea is to set aside dollars starting now and plan 20 to 30 years out. So when the infrastructure investments we're making now with the Parks Bond dollars are ready and in need of replacement or repair, there's a fund that you can draw upon to make those investments. The dollars could be direct investments from that fund, or the fund could be utilized to go get grant money from the state, so matching dollars. So it could be utilized in a couple of different ways. So I'm going to walk through a couple of investments we have made already with the parks utility fees, some specific examples that we have made or are making. So first of all, you'll see the Tuolton Community Park field lights, which are now LED and functional and safe to use and low energy. And then the parks restroom renovations that we made at the Commons and TCP. The Atfollity picnic shelters, a brand-new picnic shelter, folks now have a place to go out of the sun. Little Woodrose Park and Victoria Woods Stair projects. Those two projects are parks utility fee funded projects that we're doing the design engineering for right now, and then we will be completing those in the next fiscal year. Under playground renovations, Jergens Park equipment and playground surfacing have been replaced. The park playground equipment at Atfollity and the surfacing has been replaced. The Iback Park equipment and surfacing have been replaced. And so all of those playground elements are another sort of set of parks amenities that will need replacement in about 20- to 30-year time span. And then the last item is a trail, and that's the Boones Ferry Boardwalk. The section that we just completed this last year, it was funded by Parks SDCs, was just one small section, but that entire boardwalk from Brown's Ferry Park until the boardwalk actually ends, that boardwalk surfacing will need to be replaced at some point in time. So those are some of the examples of newer infrastructure that will have an end date. And then other items to be considered. These are items outside of that immediate basket, but will need replacement in the future. So the high school field surface, the artificial turf surface there, it was shared, the cost is shared by the city, and the city utilizes about half the field time at that facility. The high school field lights that actually were just replaced last year, those are LEDs now, but those in 20, 30 years will need to be replaced with new LEDs, or some type of work will need to be done. Who knows what the lights will be like in 30 years? Common splash pad, which was recently replaced. Kia Kett's Bridge. The Tuolton River Greenway Trail and amenities at that trail. And this particular section, the segment that we're concluding right now, it's almost done, the segment that's underneath 99 Bridge that connects the River Ridge Apartments on the west to the River Keepers House property, which is just about to wrap up. The Veterans Plaza and Los Casitas Park, which will be under construction very shortly. So those are just a few examples of things coming up that we see in the future that the parks utility fee is, right now, really focused on that infrastructure that's already aged out, that's already that score of five. And so these are all items that are not, but will be in 20 or 30 years. So I'm going to pass it on to Don.
So Ross and I got together and talked about, okay, what would this look like and what assets would we want to consider? The things that are the fives now that are on that list, we have funding options for it. That's why the parks utility fee was passed. And of course, there are things that are on the bond list as well that may be part of that. So the concept that was kind of brought forward at the Budget Committee last year was, we're adding these things, we're putting new assets in place, we don't want to be in the same position we are today with needing this parks utility fee to back all that. So what items would we put together on a replacement fund? So we talked about the new equipment and the new amenities is what would be the items that we would look at to be funded in the future for the Parks Replacement Fund. As I mentioned, the current needs that are in the assessment now would continue to be funded by the parks utility fee and then added to the replacement schedule at that point. What we're doing is going through the list of those items, coming up with what the useful life is and how much it would cost us to replace. So we'll take that replacement cost out at whatever year that is, divided by the number of years to come up with the annual amount we need to set aside for each asset, and then put that together. So that's the pieces that we're working on now of identifying. Ross mentioned things like the Veterans Plaza, but we're not going to be replacing the whole plaza somewhere in the future, but there's amenities in that that will need to be replaced. And so there's also, again, those kinds of things that we're looking at, at the Veterans Plaza, Los Casitas Park, so that we're not putting the whole cost of the project, but those amenities that we'll need to replace somewhere in the future. So if you look at the list that we put up a second ago, the estimated annual amount for a replacement fund to replace these items and others that are on our list would be about $300,000 a year that we'd have to set aside annually to have the money in. So it's not pocket change, it's not our petty cash fund, it's a significant amount of money. So then we had to figure, how would we fund this? So there are some potential options. One, the general fund. I can honestly say that's not sustainable. Our ongoing expenditures are already pretty much identified in the general fund. So another option, there's really two pieces, two options utilizing the parks utility fee. One, we have a current $5 fee. We could divert a portion of that towards the replacement fund, but of course, what that would do is take away from other projects that are on our list that's already set aside with that $5. Or we could increase the utility fee and take that portion towards the replacement fund. So just for an example, with the amount we're bringing in right now in the parks utility fee, $1 of that fee brings in about $150,000 a year. We're bringing in now about $750,000 with that $5 fee. So if you go back to the last slide, it's 300,000. You know, if you raise it $2, we could start putting together the replacement fund. So we've identified that really these are the three options that are on the table. First, not sustainable. Second, we have a fee set up, we could take a portion of that. The third would be adding to it and taking that towards the replacement. At that, I thought I would ask, anybody know why did the kid cross the playground?
To get to the other slide.
To get to the other slide. At that, we'll answer any questions you have for us.
Questions for Don and/or Ross. Commissioner Gonzalez first, and then Councilbrooks.
So you had mentioned that we are picking up 750,000 a year with the $5 fees, is that correct?
Correct.
So how do we account for the increase in taxes, in property value taxes on the land, on the R&amp;B value? How are you adjusting for those kinds of earned income coming in?
So related to the parks?
Well, it's...
Or just in general?
Just in general, because that is extra revenue that comes into the city. I understand that we have added costs with contract negotiations and other expenses, but that is also, I don't know, I look at my property tax, but it's gotten up significantly in the last 14 years that I've lived there. And so where does that money go to and how does that play into the scenario with this conversation we're having now?
So our property tax revenues go towards the library, it goes to police services, it goes to all the other items that are part of the general fund. Our IS, so the parks, the Parks and Rec is part of that fund as well, the general fund. So all that goes to that. So any increases in the property tax revenues are going to the increased cost of those services. It is not tied into this fund at all. The $5 per thousand, or $5 for the fee is a flat fee across all utility accounts, and so commercial is paying the same as the residential, it's a flat fee of $5.
So with the increase, I understand that it goes towards all these, it goes into the general fund, so there's nothing left, there wouldn't be anything left over that would go and can spill over onto the park side?
No, unfortunately, no.
Every penny's counted.
Pretty much, yeah. And at the Budget Committee meetings, I'll talk through where our, so the first meeting, we're going to be talking about what our revenue sources are, how we project them, and then what those go for. So we'll go into much more depth in the next few weeks.
Thank you very much.
Councilbrooks.
Thank you for taking a look at this. I remember the conversation, and it's a lot like what we do with our vehicle replacement and understand the useful life of things. So I'm kind of curious, we're doing a lot of replacing all at once right now, and so we're kind of still doing a chunk. And so how do we kind of prioritize and diversify timing and stagger? That's one question I have. And then the second question I have is, I'm curious about useful life of things like playground equipment, for instance. Like, is there warranties on playground equipment? I just, my furnace just failed, it was literally one month after the warranty. So it's like, I do know that there's projections on a lot of this stuff, so I'm just curious, like, where you see sort of the most money going, how often? And then does that kind of, if we do this like this, would that kind of come into our planning as well, where we could look at more durable things? Or things get dated and you don't want them that durable, right? So those are my two.
Yeah, thank you. So your first question about how we're spreading our investments out over time and staggering investments so that it all doesn't come due at one point in time. And the nature of the replacements is that that's essentially how it's going to work because the utility fee is collected on an annual basis. We only have so much money to invest to replace some of this infrastructure. And so naturally, you'll have a progression of age or succession of age across all the different investment areas. As far as the Parks Bond investments go, yes, we are making a large, one-time investment. And on the surface, it looks as though it's all happening at once, when in reality, this year, we invested, since the bond was passed, approximately $7 million, or I'm sorry, approximately $5 million in this first year. That replaced playgrounds, the lights at TCP, and some other projects, and some land acquisition. The rest of the dollars will not be invested, it'll happen over probably a six-year period. And so naturally, those investments will happen slowly over time. So that's how it works. And so there's sort of a, just by the nature of how the money comes in, it can't go out until we have it, that will just sort of organically occur. And then to your question about warranty and lifespan and service life of some of these investments, you know, they vary. So if you look at something like the splash pad that we invested in, the mechanical features of that will inevitably stop working at some point. We will replace and maintain and manage that as long as we possibly can, just like we did with the last splash pad that lasted about 30 years. And probably most of the parts in that equipment room were replaced at some point over that 30-year span. So we will get the maximum life that we can out of it. Some of the items just simply have a lifespan, a plastic slide, after 30 years is scratched and dinged and banged up and may not be as safe as it should be. The other piece to that is that the standards change over time. What's acceptable now in a park and what meets standards will not be the case in 30 years. And so we saw that at Jergens Park, it was absolutely in good shape for its age, but from a standards perspective, we wouldn't dare put that in a park. So that was a prime candidate for replacement. And so typical warranty on a playground equipment, so I'll use Atfollity Park for an example, that playground has about a 10-year warranty on it, which is great. We feel really good about that. It's one of the industry leaders in terms of the length of the warranty. But every single amenity has a different manufacturer, pretty much, in a different warranty period. And so we have, we keep all the records, and we manage, and when it's in warranty, the manufacturer steps up and brings out new parts. So does that answer your question a little bit?
Yeah, and I just kind of envisioned sort of a graph going across of sort of, like, concrete's going to last a way different amount of time than something that the standards are going to change, that something. So I'm just curious if there's, just so people can understand it, if there's going to be a way of like, looking at like, whatever, 10 to 20-year, whatever these, you know, like, sort of segmented out so that people can kind of see like the tortoise and the hare and the...
Yes, yeah, so we have that data. We, the main source for that information for our department is our asset condition assessments. We do the assessments comprehensively in every park, on every piece of equipment we have. Every two years, we update that condition score. And if there are any changes, we track that in a spreadsheet, and then on an annual basis, we evaluate those scores and the need based on those scores. And so newer infrastructure is obviously scored a 1, and so it's very clear, this infrastructure has a long life. 2, 3, 4, and 5, 5 is the worst case. So you can sort of gauge the length of lifespan left based upon that number, that score that we give it. A 1 would be expected to last at least 20 or 30 years. In the case of some items like concrete trails, for example, much longer lifespan on those types of assets.
Thank you.
Councilsacko, then Council Hillier, then...
Thank you. So when talking to residents of Tuolton, they often bring up the maintenance of our parks. So can you just remind us how we pay for the maintenance of our parks and what we're doing to maintain our park assets today? And I understand the shelf life of everything, but just how do we make sure we can extend the life as much as possible?
So our operational maintenance is funded out of the general fund. The capital maintenance, so the replacement of the assets and the addition of new either comes out of system development charge, park utility fee, or Parks Bond. Those are our three primary sources of funds. On the operating side, what we do on a day-to-day basis, we have our Parks and Rec staff are out in the parks every day. In the peak time of year, we're out in the parks six days a week with our maintenance staff. And we also have our park rangers out in the parks, actually, we have a presence seven days a week. And what we focus on is safety and cleanliness. Those are our main focus areas. So they're cleaning bathrooms, they're inspecting playgrounds on a regular basis. That includes checking all the bolts and anchors and fasteners. And they go through a process every day on a regular basis. And so that includes trash and cleaning restrooms and blowing trails and picking up litter in the park, removing graffiti, and you name it. Doing a lot of string trimming work and weed management work. And we also have a fantastically robust volunteer program that does a ton of work within our parks. And so that's within our Parks Department, that's how we manage on a day-to-day basis our operational needs.
Council Hillier.
So thank you, that was similar to my question. So I guess part of it was, is the maintenance preventative or reactive? And I hear you say about the outward space, it's definitely a preventative sort of way versus reactive, but could you speak to, for instance, the splash pad mechanics and things? Like, when are those attended to on an equal amount of time and that sort of plan, please?
Sure, yeah. The splash pad, we have a staff person dedicated to Tuolton Community Park, and every day, he is managing the splash pad when it's in operation. And that includes, it is a treated water, and so we treat it on-site. And so he's checking chemical levels, he's checking the balance, the pH, he's ensuring that we've got proper flow. And so he's doing that on a daily basis, and he's keeping records of all of that information. So that's an example, kind of operationally, how that works. Now, when something goes wrong, we quickly shut down the operations of it, and we try to troubleshoot internally first, and then if we can't solve the problem, their aquatic company that we work with, that comes out and helps us diagnose whatever's happening. And so that's an example of what we're doing on an operational basis at the splash pad.
Council President Pratt.
Okay, I'm going to pick on Don.
Okay.
The $300,000 number you came up with, I'm sure you did this, but were you looking at like investing that to meet inflationary cost?
So we did adjust it for inflation, so yes, there is that growth factor in there.
So like in 10 years, will 300,000, if you keep investing, it still work?
So this will be a process that we are continually looking at.
Okay.
What, you know, so we'll identify the asset, we'll identify the useful life and say, for this asset, we need to set aside X, and that'll be set aside. Now, at the end of that useful life, doesn't mean we're necessarily going to replace it. Maybe the staff gets out there and it's got two more years of life. We're not just going to replace because we have the money.
Right.
But we have it set aside. We'll be investing it, the idle dollars, so there will be revenue coming in, and that will factor in. Of course, then we have new assets coming on, and some will be more expensive than that. We may have other assets that come on that we need to factor into it as well. So we'll continually monitor this, continually update it as growth of costs. You know, we'll have an assumption in there of replacement costs, but that may need to change. So it'll be something we look at each year and factor in interest revenues, construction cost increases, and so forth.
Okay, now my big question is, considering what I've seen happen at the county, my concern is that we build up these funds and it's all great, and it's 20 years from now, and until I come and whine from that side, there's going to be some other financial need, and this is going to be a nice pile of money to use for that. Is there any way to prevent that from happening?
The council could choose to put a restriction on it. It'll be set up as a restricted fund anyway.
Okay.
But it could, you could put a formal restriction on it when it's set up. That is a mechanism that has been used, it's not been used. Like in our vehicle replacement fund, we don't have that mechanism in place. Just because we know these things need to be replaced, then, you know, there's no other funding source for it.
Right.
That's why we're doing this.
I just have a concern that this could become a big pile of money, that, you know, the needs always exceed the revenues, right?
There is that. Other questions? Council Hillier.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just curious if the $300,000 or the budget right now takes into account the new parks that we hope to onboard and the growth that you're seeing? If you could speak to that, please.
They don't right now. That is just those assets that we showed you that we've identified. So the next steps, if council says, yes, this is something we'd like staff to look at, our next steps would be to really kind of sharpen our pencils and look at the cost. If there's something that we know is coming in that we can factor in, I mean, we know some parks are, but we don't know what those amenities are yet to factor in. So once we kind of identify those, then we'll add it to this replacement schedule. So the 300,000 is, it's not quite back of the napkin, but it was taking those assets, useful life, doing the inflationary factor to identify, but we'll really dig in and do a much deeper dive to come up with what that exact dollar amount would look like, and come back to the council with that information, if that's the work the council would like us to do.
Council Reyes.
I may be asking some dumb questions, but just bear with me. So you said that the $5 that we, right now, currently, those fees for utilities, you want to add a dollar to that, or you want a dollar from those $5 to be added into this restrictive fund?
So that would be up to the council. What we're saying is the $5 right now is pretty well accounted for. I mean, we have, Ross mentioned, there's a lot of projects that are on the list.
Right.
Doesn't mean that the council couldn't make the decision that, no, we don't want to increase that 5, so if you want to have a replacement fund, let's take a portion of the existing.
Okay.
Because of the dynamics of that, then the other option would be to increase the fee and set that aside. You could set it aside for the replacement fund, if you had other operational needs, this fee could be used for that as well. So there's different ways of going about it, but it's up to what the council would want to direct when we come back with deeper dive information.
Right, and I do recall that when we talked about this, the fear, my fear was that it was going to increase every two, three years once we start adding a fee. And I just wanted to clarify that what you were saying, it's either/or, right? Either remove, take a dollar for those $5 per month, and I just want to clarify it on record, and/or add $5 to that fee that already, to the $5.
$2.
$2?
$2.
So it'll be $7 a month per household? No matter, it's just per household, period.
It is per utility account, so yes.
That will be $7, okay.
Yeah, that's the direction the council, if they'd say, yes, add $2 to do it, that's where we would go. Again, we'll come back with more numbers, and then council could decide which avenue they would like and what that number might look like.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, Councilbrooks.
My other question is, you mentioned being able to do this and put this aside for replacing things so that we don't have this sort of pile of stuff from neglect, basically, of our assets, so to take care of our assets and replace them. I just keep thinking about the other grants that could be utilized. So I'm curious about what the efficiency benefit would be to from these kinds of things. So I don't know all about grants for parks, but I know there's categories of grants for different types of programs and different kinds of needs and communities from other work I do. And I'm just curious if there's also a way to categorize some of that to make the efficiencies strong of anticipated change... strong of anticipated changes that we will most likely see as we usually see things well before they get grant opportunities, issues. So I'm just curious about adding, like, do you have any projected idea of how much more income we could get because we have this set aside there that can match funds?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor. So we received grant dollars for the splash pad. It was partially funded by grant dollars. The, without money match, we would not have been able to bring in
Right.
the money that allowed us to replace the splash pad. And so it really takes money to bring those state dollars to us.
Yep.
And so it's, yeah, it's not, it's really not an option. And the higher the match the city can bring, the better your outcome, the better your score is by that granting body, typically. They want to see that the city has committed and made a commitment to financially support whatever it is they're being asked to support, so.
And I'm just curious, like, is there percentage benefits that we could kind of gauge as far as how, you know, doing this could also help us raise whatever, 15% more, da-da-da-da-da, on certain types of things? And if there's breakdowns of very familiar needs that parks grants are for?
Yeah, we could certainly bring some of that data back for you.
I think it would be helpful.
To show the different match amounts.
Yeah, to just show the efficiency and the benefit. Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
I'm for adding the $2 and asking you staff to come back with something. Reason I'm for that is those councils that are here, when this was developed, we actually were looking at $7. We went down to $5 based on the existing amount of projects and anticipated work that had to be done, and knowing that this might come back. I don't want to saddle a future city council like we got saddled with, with expanding park system that grew tremendously over the 20 years. We had the experience of growth here in town, and we just didn't keep up on parks, infrastructure, all those things. We're looking back going, hmm, maybe we can do this better next time. I think this is one thing we can do for future city councillors, future city councils, and for staff to have this money set aside, especially for matching funds. Even the feds ask for a minimum of 20%. And that's even getting higher every day. So to have the ability to have matching monies and having a bank account set aside to deal with these kind of things that are in the future with additional parks coming, it's not going to be coming out of general fund. We know it's not going to come out of general fund. We only get 3% increase in general fund, whereas inflation's seven, so we're behind the eight ball already. So I'm all for having you look at that $2 increase and coming back with something, some analysis some people are asking for. And look, because maybe eventually over time, that could phase away as we're catching up. Or the $5 is the punch list that Ross has on this list. I don't think it's going to get down that quick, but, you know, we might not need the whole five, and maybe we can change it in the future. But I totally agree with Council President Pratt that we put the guideware else around it, that it couldn't be rated in a future city council, because that's not the purpose of it. We see that happen, as she mentions, other places. I would hate to see that happen here. So we'll have consensus or agreement that we move forward on adding the $2, or have staff come back with something at a future meeting for us to review. Council Sacco.
Just a couple more comments. Yes, I'm in support of that. And, you know, you talk about setting up the future council and city staff, but also, I think it also sets up the residents of Tuolton to not have, you know, that burden for, you know, like a parks bond or something in the future, not to say we wouldn't have another one, but, you know, it sort of, the residents can pay for it over time versus this one big, big investment. So I just wanted to acknowledge that as well. And also, and you'll probably do this, but I would love to see, again, the utility fee that neighboring cities are paying currently as well.
Anything else? Council Gonzalez.
I would not be for this increase. I think that there, I would like to look at how we can try to be more lean with some of our resources. I'll give just one example. And I'm not going to get into the weeds, but just one example. We planted trees out in the front island beds here on Tuolton Sherwood that are under our care. Those trees want to be wider than the island, okay? And so I would consider, I would want to have trees that don't need care, that can just plant and leave. And so, and I see that kind of, that kind of planting throughout the city that I think that we could look at to try to optimize, right tree, right location, less labor, because labor is resources, and labor costs us money. So I would be interested in that kind of information, what the thought is around that. I also see plants that require so much labor to maintain, and that is expensive, especially with the rising cost of labor. So I would be more, I would be interested in looking at those kinds of activities as opposed to giving an increase to our city.
Council Reyes.
Just a couple of comments. And maybe one more question. Are there any relief, tax relief coming up soon that we paid for years ago, and now they're coming to fading out or anything like that? Like, I don't know how long, I know the Tuolton Moving Forward just happened, but anything like that happening?
Any infrastructure?
If there's anything that will go away in our tax, on our bonds, property taxes or anything?
Expiring bonds.
Yeah, expiring, coming up in the next couple of years?
In 2028, we'll see the Tuolton Moving Forward bonds mature.
Okay.
The parks bonds we just sold are 20-year bonds. So what year we sold, 23, so 2043. We have another, if I remember correctly, we're in the last years of, well, it's the same time. So we refinanced a couple of the older bonds for the library and the parks that we had outstanding. So those will come due at the same time as the transportation bonds. We put that, that's all into one bond. So those will all come off in 2028.
Good, four years.
The other element I'll just, I'll throw out is, is that the, and Dawn will talk about this at the next budget meeting, at the first budget meeting, is that the percentage revenue that the city realizes from property taxes is a small piece of the pie, that they're, the county, the state, the school district, fire, so on and so forth, are, you're also paying those within your taxes. And there could be bonds or levies within those organizations that voters pass that could be expiring, but we don't have that data right now. But I think Dawn has, will have a nice slide showing that breakdown, that property taxes really, City of Tuolton really is a small portion of that pie.
Right. I understand. I just want to have people think of that, that there is some relief or some things are happening out there too. It's not just keep adding, adding, adding. You know, it's that. The other question I had was the STCs. I thought they were also part of maintenance.
It's new stuff.
Right, I understand. But was it for the parks or was it for?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, STCs are available to us absolutely, and they're a key part of building the future parks.
Right.
And so we are seeing revenue come in from new development that's paying those one-time fees. They can only be, that money can only be used for new park infrastructure and not old parks.
Existence, yeah. No, I remember that. I just wanted to clarify that. I'm a little bit, I don't know, I'm undecided, honestly. I gotta think. I gotta think, yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to vote on it tonight. Just direct the staff to proceed.
That's, that's kind of like, I need to process this.
Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, really quick, I want to say that as far as the parks, I'm sure there's room for efficiencies, but being on T-Park for all those years, I've seen you guys operate on a shoestring budget and do all you can to maintain our park assets. The reason I wanted this is because I feel like it's just like, I mean, it's law that like, each of ways have to put aside money to maintain their assets. So I think it's very irresponsible not to do this for our parks. And like the mayor said, I don't want to set up a future council in our city to have the same situation. And I guess like, what Council Brooks was saying with the matching thing, it reminds me of like a 401K. Like, if you don't put anything in it, you don't have any opportunity to get matching funds. I consider free money, so. That's where I'm at.
Okay. Do you have what you need?
Yeah, so our plan will be, so we'll go back, we'll sharpen the pencils, we'll kind of go through things. I don't see it coming back in the next couple of months. So it won't be proposed in the 24, 25 budget. If council, if we get far enough in the process and council says, go ahead and go, we can add it during the fiscal year. Otherwise, it would be planned in the 25, 26 budget. But at some point, we'll be back in the next few months or so, back in front of you with a little bit more detailed information. Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to roundtable and coordination for tonight. So we've got, first off, I got Council Reyes, you're going to do the pledge allegiance.
Sure.
Then I've got, Council Gonzalez is doing the volunteer appreciation proclamation, but I've got two more. I've got one for the honoring public employees. Anyone would like to do that one? Council Brooks. And then National Police Week? You're going to do it? All right. So I got Police is Pratt, Brooks. All right. Any questions about tonight's consent agenda? We've got quite a few of them on there. Council Brooks.
I don't have any request to take anything off consent, but I did think that the work that we're doing in Las Casitas is noteworthy. Sometimes things go on consent, and we don't have the opportunity to celebrate some things that we've been working on for quite some time. So I just wanted to say that I feel really good about this and feel really connected with my council on our support for this. Thank you.
Okay. So everyone's okay with consent, all right? So with that, we'll go ahead and try to get roundtable done within the next 15 minutes. And we'll start with, oh, wait I started last time. Okay, so Council Sacco.
Thank you. We had the idea committee on April 15th, where we reviewed the council, the 2030 vision, and also our 2024 priorities. And then they were asked what success would look like if we had an inclusive community. So I just want to take a moment to amplify those voices and summarize what they said. It was a really robust conversation, which was, was great. And a couple of things that they mentioned is affordable childcare within the city, which, you know, we don't talk a whole lot about. So I wanted to make sure to mention that. Programming in all parts of our city versus focused only in the downtown area, which I think the Parks Department has done a great job at that, especially since COVID, having more programming in our parks throughout the city. True affordable housing came up. City employees that represent, city employees and representation that reflect the community, having a community garden space as a shared food resource, having a more robust outreach program, and hearing all voices, not just the same voices we always hear from. So a lot of similar, similar themes that we already talk about, which is really great, but also just some new, some new things that we don't always talk about. So I wanted to amplify, again, amplify those voices. And that's it. Thank you.
Council Hillier.
I have nothing to report.
Council Reyes.
Nothing to report.
Council Gonzalez.
So I attended the East CIO meeting. That was very nice to see the involvement. I did have a question that I asked on why it's called the CIO. Each time I'm asked constantly, what does CIO stand for? Because people don't know what it is anymore. I, so I was inquiring about that. I think that we should probably spell it out, because it's been so much, time has passed where people don't even know what it is anymore as an acronym. And as the, as the CIOs are decrying lack of involvement, lack of interest, well, let's just spell it out. Let's call it for what it is and see what can happen there. So I guess more to come around that. It's been quiet on any other meetings. The only thing I want to report on is I completed drafting the article into All the Times for Mayor, and the topic at hand was the Water Master Plan, which is pretty cool, really interesting. I did send it off to Rachel as well, just to make sure I spoke correctly and represented correctly. And I'm happy to pronounce that she did not do, not a single edit. So I was very happy about that. It took about a whole week to draft, but, but there it is. That's all I got.
Council Brooks.
Since we last, well, first of all, Happy Earth Day, and also I want to acknowledge Passover too, for people that celebrate that. And I went to the PAB meeting. We went over our plan where we are and approved the final plan. We, I went to the executive committee for the consolidated water, I can't think today, sorry, the regional water, I have to look at the acronyms, plan. And we basically are taking a look at the, all the rules and just updating and modernizing them and making them user-friendly. There's a lot of things that have been done in a really customary way. And it's a small staff that runs that. And I think over the next, not right away, but over the next few years, there might be some retirements coming. So they want everything kind of really buttoned up and easy to use and access and understand. So that was a good conversation. And then I met with the Arts Advisory Committee, and we kind of took a look back at this year. The work on the Veterans Plaza took up a lot of time and energy. So we looked at our balances and ideas for projects that we would like to get to this year and for the rest of the year planned for the fiscal year to June 30th. And then I just also wanted to take a minute of kind of personal privilege to say today on our, on our Earth Day, that, you know, we had an employee that was, that left. So the, it's been a pleasure to be the alternate for our Climate Action Plan Committee. And I know that we'll be seeing that work soon. It's a little bit later than we wanted, which isn't really great in that conversation, in my opinion. So I just want to put a reminder and a notice to the community that I'm very interested in a climate action plan getting going that is solid, that has outcome measures, that's projected for like five years, that will have staff in that position, and will continue to work with consultants for the most effective and impactful plan that we can. There's so much that's coming from the state, the feds, that we have to accommodate anyway as a city, and then changes that we have to do in our planning and other ways that we can improve funding through things like climate credits that we can do through parks or through different operations. And I just want to know that, for the community to know that I'm committed on us moving forward, and that I'm really grateful for the support. The other thing I want to say about it is I saw a program over the weekend talking about it, climate action, and it noted that in the population of the United States, 70% of voters support climate action plan. And I know that in Oregon, we tip higher than the national average. So I found that encouraging on one hand, and people facing it on another hand is because there's a lot of issues that people have been facing. So also, my heart's out to people that have been impacted negatively over this last year. Thank you.
Council President Pratt.
I had one meeting, it was C4 Metro, Clackamas County Metro Subcommittee meeting. We talked again about regional flexible funds. Mostly, it was the group advocating because the way their criteria is for funding. It was pointed out that they pick out condensed areas where there's poverty, but in Clackamas County especially, there's dotted areas where it's not necessarily counted because there's not enough people to really make a mark in their system. And that the funding system. And that the funding, because they're looking to affect the whole region, it really, once again, becomes Portland-centric and for them to look throughout the whole metro region for the projects.
Back on April 11th, the Washington County Mayor's Group met, and we were given a presentation by a former mayor. It's called the Mayors for Guaranteed Income. You might have heard the idea of for those folks in communities where you have families who are working three or four jobs, the minimum wage, and still not making it, that there's programs, pilot programs using ARPA dollars to say, you know what, let's find, start up a pilot program, select several hundred families from our community, and then give them guaranteed income anywhere between $300 to $500 a month, and see how that changes their lives and see if that is positively impactful for the community and for those families. So they gave a presentation looking for support from mayors across the United States. They, I point, I did some research and I went to school in Rochester, New York. Rochester just stood this up for several hundred families. And I asked about small communities, and there was a community in Ohio of 3,000 people, and they're assisting 30 families right now for about $300 a month per family. And we're going to basically evaluate how it works so far. The cities have done and said there's been phenomenal success. These families are no longer struggling as much as they used to be. The children are better in schools, adults a lot, a lot less stressed. So going to be looking more into that. All they're really looking for is mayors to sign on and support. The Washington County Auditor, I don't know if it was, they have sent out surveys to random individuals and county government in regards to misstep, and how you feel about misstep and how the county is running the misstep program. I happily responded with mine, as many of the mayors just happened to get those surveys and it was pretty pointed answers. I want to remind folks, on May 23rd, the West Side Economic Alliance is to meet the mayor's breakfast over in Tigard. It's always an entertaining event because all the regions' mayors have a few minutes to pitch their cities and ask questions. You know, people get to ask questions, so it's really fun. On the 15th, we had the Washington County Corning Committee. I think I had the same STIP presentation from ODOT that Council President Pratt went to. Long story short, the amount of STIP dollars is going down tremendously. Basically, ODOT's saying there's going to maintain pavement. There's not going to be any new pavement in the foreseeable future. And bridges are supposed to be fixed and repaired with a 100-year lifespan. They're going to push that beyond 100 years and do a lot of load testing to see what's the maximum load this bridge will now tolerate versus when it was built. And then if it can't handle the weight that it was built for, they'll basically shut it down for truck traffic. And that's a lot of diversion that we're going to have to deal with, where trucks having to take maybe an extra couple, three hours because a bridge can no longer bear its weight. So sorry, sad of state of affairs for ODOT with money. It's just, it's just not there. And they're kind of behind with the ADA curb ramps across the state. And that's where a big chunk of money's being diverted to get that done. So folks can travel safely, you know, by foot and by wheelchair across communities. They also talked, we talked about the West Side multimodal study. Basically, that's the study of 26 and 217. Employers out on the, out in Hillsborough complaining about traffic congestion and issues for employees and for their goods going down 26 and 217. So multiple scenarios were looked at on how to lessen congestion on I, on 26 and 217. Of course, tolling was factored into that. And magically, tolling cut down congestion on 26 and 217. We all know in our heads going, yeah, because it's now all going through Tigard and Hillsborough on their side streets. What's interesting there is the study has concluded, but there's no money going forward. So you basically, you've got a study that recommends something and there's no dollars to enact anything they recommended. Later that afternoon, Chair Harrington, I think I'd sent the PowerPoint slide out, went over how deflection and diversion is going to work in Washington County. For those folks who are detained by our officers, they're still working out the details. They're standing up in office at Washington County that will help coordinate the deflection process. It should be interesting what happens. They've got a September deadline, but it might slip a little bit to have the program stood up by. They're working with community agencies for those folks who decide to go through the deflection process, which means they'll go to the justice system, go through the process of going to detox and rehab. So making sure they have beds, they're supported, and making sure that they don't fall through the cracks in the system. So they're still working on that. The mayor's had some pointed questions, making sure this is not a repeat of Measure 110, and some of the things that we should have learned from that about losing those folks. Or officers starting to get frustrated, you know, citing folks over and over and over because the jail has no beds for those folks who decide not to be deflected. How's that going to work? More to come on that. Went to the Sherwood State of the City at, on the 17th, very well attended. It was an interesting program. A lot of cool things going on with the amount of growth they're going through and between their population, residential population and their commercial. And then this morning, or actually this afternoon, I went to the Forest Grove in Cornelius State of the City event. So drove to the other side of the county. People were pretty impressed that someone crossed over 185th to go to the other side of the county for State of the City. But it's kind of cool to see a tag team State of the City, you know, two cities. I didn't realize that Forest Grove is up to 26,000 people now. So they're right nipping at our heels. I just want to remind people on May 2nd, 7:30 to 9:00 AM at the marquee community center, it will be our State of the City event with breakfast event with breakfast burritos and bagels and juice, and a fantastic program reviewing what we've done and what we will be doing in the future. With that, I'll go ahead and close this work session. We've got a few minutes, and we'll come back here at 7 o'clock.